That would break our hearts.
Maybe just break our hearts.
We're live, we're live, we're ready to start.
We're good to go?
Yes, we're all ready.
Yeah, I was awake.
We're awake.
Okay. Okay. That's funny.
Yeah.
I don't know. Anyway, uh, like to open, uh, June 12th, 2025, planning board meeting, 7:00 PM. Tonight, for starters, we have a public hearing on a minor subdivision. Uh, who's here in regards to that, okay? You property owners, are you? Okay, could come forward, please.
May I view the map?
I'm sorry, what's that?
May we view the map?
Oh, you, you have to leave the map?
The map is right here.
This is the public hearing, I haven't seen it.
Oh, oh, you-
I don't think she's the owner.
Oh, I thought you were probably, I thought you were property-
Oh, I'm gonna butter.
Huh?
I'm gonna butter.
Oh, okay, okay. Are you a property owner?
I'm representing them.
He's a surveyor.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, alright, okay, Liza was getting at, who's here?
So you just need her name.
Tortoise Adventures.
I think she signed in.
Oh, did she?
Uh, okay, yeah, I tell you, do you mind stating your name so we get on the record?
Nancy McColey.
Okay, you're adjoining property owner?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, as long as you're up here, uh, do you have any questions on it, or?
Um, no, I just wanted to see how-
Where are you located in relation to it?
I'm to the south, this is me right here.
Okay.
I'm a bit better to the south. Um, the only concerns I have, um, is bedrock under shale, and there's ledges. There's a 50-foot drop-off right here.
Yeah.
So the people who purchased these two lots in particular, unless they can rappel down that 50-foot abutment, will never be able to get to the remaining. So I think it's about three to four acres that's actually developable up front here, and then the rest is just something they can look at, or, um, get a bulldozer and a-
Okay.
Dynamite, but it's- That's my only concern, but it, it does leave enough up here for developing, it's just really difficult. And it's tough to get water, my well is 600 feet.
Ooh.
And it's been drilled three times to get to 600 feet.
Mm-hmm.
My sister, um, lives on a house adjacent, also abutment, and, uh, she's had her well drilled twice. So it's-
Both times they were drilled, not pounded?
Yeah.
Wow. Pounding, correct, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So they were drilled, they weren't pounded?
Correct. On the suggestion of the well drillers.
Uh-huh.
So I don't know why, but they know the land better than I do.
I'll tell you why.
We know why.
Uh, back, backing up-
What is it, what is why, why?
Hmm?
Why would they wanna drill rather, more money than pounding?
No, it's, drilling is faster, but then you drill through the water and seal up the pla- it, it, that's the common thought, is you're sealing up the holes, chill down. Where pounding takes a week longer, but it crushes-
They did do pounding on their second well, obviously.
But they also have a rotary pounder.
I'm not sure, but it was usually, if it's pounded, it, it-
It takes a long time.
It takes a long time, but they're not happy, because they find water sooner.
That's interesting, I didn't know that. I'll know that the next time I go draw.
Kayla, let's back up a minute, yeah, um, we need to check to make sure that all the, um-
We've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, we've got six out of seven, we got one that wasn't returned, one green card. Who wasn't turned, um, Liza Todd Tibby.
Okay.
On, she's home, she's in the water. She is, she didn't, um, receive or get her green card returned.
Sometimes she's out.
Actress is there.
Okay, she neighbors us, sometimes she's out of the country, so that might be why. And I think she owns several properties right there, if I, if I recall from looking it up.
But everything went out, so recovered on the green card?
Yeah, everything went out.
Okay, okay. All right, um, anybody in the board have any more questions than, um? This, uh, it's interesting to find out that there's cliff back there, you know?
There's actually two, in order to get to the creek at the bottom, there's a 50-foot, um, a third of the way back, and it levels out, and then it drops another 50 or more down.
Huh?
Yeah.
Didn't we talk about having, um, it's so that they couldn't subdivide again?
Limits.
And limit the, that-
Well, we threw that out there, but, uh, we never heard back on it, so.
Doesn't sound like it's gonna be a problem.
Huh?
Doesn't sound like there's enough to develop a plan there.
Yeah.
You threw it out to Tortoise?
Um, at the last thing, when, um, what the heck was I mean?
Just, uh-
When Sean was here.
Yeah, okay.
Um, they just said they might wanna think about it, or?
Didn't discuss with me at all, I'll, I'll bring it up again, I'll see if I can-
Okay, just because it makes things sometimes more desirable for-
Yeah, I gotta agree.
For everybody, you know, neighbors, you know, planning board.
Yeah.
The, now, uh, and actually, the people that buy it, you know, if they're good with it, you know?
It'd be, it'd be difficult to subdivide.
Yeah, especially given the information we just got about this backdrop and all.
It's almost like a, an instant conservation easement on the back.
Yeah.
Two-thirds of the property.
But it was, um-
Well, I appreciate you letting us know that, you know?
It was brought up at the last meeting in case, for the public hearing, that if people came in, were concerned about the well and water, and some of the people that aren't here, probably would've brought those issues up.
Well, kind of buyer beware, I mean, it's, uh-
Yeah.
If they're making legal lot sizes, and-
Yeah, and they are weak, there's more than enough room.
Yeah, yeah.
Um-
And if it was a flat all the way back, it could easily be subdivided again.
Yes.
Correct.
So that was the, that was the way we-
Well, you'd have to build a road or something to get back to it all.
Well, it'd probably be a flag lot, you know?
Yeah.
Well, that was kind of one of the things we were hoping, we've seen in quite a few subdivisions lately, is to de-restriction so that it couldn't be further subdivided. Certainly makes a lot more appealing to everybody, you know?
Religion actually takes care of that for you, that's it.
Yeah, maybe, well, you never know.
Yeah, someone really wants to.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing what they can do.
Yes.
They want to. Um, anybody else out, no audience, that would like to come look at the maps, or has comments on this subdivision?
There you go.
Okay. What are you pulling up a top graph?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah. That's not as great as-
That's really interesting, though.
Yeah.
Certainly, I see that clearly, Matt.
That is not going to be any ones.
Well, it's giving you that.
It hasn't loaded yet.
Does it look like their property could be, uh, access to that Kings Road side?
The old Kings Road side is where they would build, I think, there's nothing, there's, there's a creek there, a creek in the back, and there's no other way to get to it.
I venture that any building would be within 400 feet of the road or something.
That's, and one more, no, there's no broadband up there. There's none here either.
That's a good point.
Hey, I got fiber at my house.
Oh, wow.
I'm gonna gig down, gig out.
It's here, the voice scouts it there.
You're made of huts and cable, right?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I had no choice, but. Remember huts and cable too?
Yeah, I mean, I like it.
You don't like your bill?
Yeah, it's a little better, definitely. Cause you're a paraglider.
Oh, it's showing that much of us?
It's definitely a-
This is the ledge, right?
Yeah, that's the ledge.
Well, I believe these lots border on that, uh, stream that comes down through, if you went up 26, stream comes down through, passes on 26.
Yeah, that, you own the overland bar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That swamp goes all the way up to like Tom Southsberry, is that true?
I don't think so, I haven't updated.
That's a long, and it's quite a divide.
No.
You fly over it, it's a valley, you know?
We didn't have any other issues, uh, last month?
No.
And they did the soil testing for the septic system, so they just have to, uh, 600-foot well, well. It's about 20 grand, isn't it?
And it's funny, cause this is a heck of a swamp, all the way back down through there.
Well, it's probably because they, um-
Beled by it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, we generally leave our public hearings open for 15 minutes.
Another five?
Huh?
Five more minutes?
Three and a half. Elliot, how, how long, Elliot?
So, 7:10 on my, on the computer.
Oh, okay.
And we go by the computer.
I started on that clock there.
No, on the bottle.
But you started earlier than the seven o'clock.
I'm leaving by that clock too, so let's get this-
Go easy, go easy.
Yeah. So if somebody walks on a 7:16, according to, to it.
Yeah. Now, we're a friendly town, we don't stand like that.
Will you be approving this subdivision tonight, following the closing of the public hearing?
Well-
We don't have the final maps out or anything right yet.
That, that would probably be possibly next month.
Did you have any changes that you wanted to make, or?
Well, no, the only thing, I think, that we mentioned at the board, uh, thrown out was if they would put a covenant on property that-
Well, you really don't have the authority.
We don't have any, well, no, we can't, that was just a suggestion, you know, that's just a suggestion.
Do you have anything else that you want to-
No, I'm not, I'm really not, here's the objective, I just wanted to see what you're doing.
That's fine.
Well, we appreciate your information, too.
Everybody know. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if, uh, Frank wants to see the soil, since he wasn't here last time or something, you guys want to go on?
Sure, I'll kill two minutes looking at that.
Our emails are being very lengthy.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry, that's- It's a good time. Heads up before you get here.
Even a lot of people work on this, this is cool in the public, like this.
Yeah. It's main night, 2024, Jan, Stacey.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Michael, this is two minutes.
That one says quarter after. We gotta do a resolution call, huh?
They have 60 minutes of soil, folks.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion or questions on this? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
For the Tortoise Adventures minor subdivision, second by M. Marie, all favor?
All right.
Okay, motion carries, the public hearing is now closed. So hook it door down, open the door.
Where do we go from there?
Uh, final maps.
Huh?
Final maps for Google from Laura, is that where it goes? Next step?
We, we, uh-
Do you have that resolution approving the subdivision, then?
No, no, we hadn't planned on that tonight, but we have the final maps on it?
Full size?
Full-size maps on this subdivision?
That's full-size map, you may want to bring the Mylar.
All that.
Bring the Mylar to the meeting.
Huh?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
He's got his stamp in there.
I understand a lot of towns don't do that that way. They approve it, then they bring the Mylar to it later.
I, I think that the different people attending the meetings for this project has created some confusion for you guys, because I know that, and the information that's shared with you from our, our town hall, it explains those things.
Well, I didn't, like, say the whole process, I told them, yeah, to, you know, do this.
Exactly.
And then I think the next step is just the final maps, the Mylars, and then the lawyer looks over them, and then we can make the resolution and sign and stamp.
Bring the Mylar, and there'll be a resolution at the next meeting, and-
We, we, we can do that, you know, and we can stamp the maps, and-
You can bring the maps to the office, and then I'll send them over to the lawyer, and then, once she says they're good, we do the resolution, sign and stamp them. That's usually how it goes, right?
Um, well, the, the maps, the map, the maps-
They don't have to, okay.
The maps should be identical to this, right?
Okay, yeah.
Well, I'll see if I can get him to add that note for the subdivision, though, um, I might be able to get him to do that, but that could be the only possible change.
Okay.
Well, you think something would change on this, what we've got?
Just if they-
That's it.
Yeah, so, um, no, if you get us the full-size maps, we'll have a resolution made up for the next meeting.
Can we?
And we could-
Well, do I bring it to the meeting, or do I give?
You can just, you can just bring them to the, you can just bring them to a meeting, or whoever's coming to a meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, we'll do the resolution, sign the maps.
All right.
If that works for you.
And we need the Mylars, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And how many, you need one copy?
We need three paper copies and one Mylar.
We'll bring more to the-
Okay, fine.
Then we'll be done.
Will that?
Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Okay.
Open the regular meeting?
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to open our regular meeting for June 12th, coming from five, everyone please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, for which we stand, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And to the Kima project. Camille, you might, you guys come up front, and you're with Nolan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Listen, um, what I'm kinda thinking, the way to address this, is maybe go through these conditions under resolution.
Yeah.
Just line by line, and see where we're at.
Okay.
Have a discussion on them, you know? Anybody got any other ideas?
Hopefully not, right?
Okay, uh- The applicant must provide a PDF of the lot consolidation maps of the court of Green County Court's Office, the town, and town designated engineer. So the, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I'm just saying, the, uh, so they provided, uh, preliminary map, uh, you just need to see it on a survey, uh, license surveyor has to file it and, uh, record it with the county, that it's, uh, you know, the full lots consolidated and recorded, so that's just typical things. Um, the only thing that we added here is the showing of all the utility easements, I think that's the, uh, more important item, is just finalized, that I know you did provide it, it looks like, um, we just need to see that on like a survey, uh-
Gotcha, yeah.
License surveyor drawing.
And then the owner surveyor understands that, it was a process.
Yeah.
So that's been a holdup, really, yes, for that so long ago.
For the consolidation?
Yes. Well, this consolidation was provided, I, I believe.
Consolidation was provided, the, the survey showing all the, the proper easements, and, and, I guess, recording of the consolidation wasn't done, and that's typically later on, but they did provide the consolidation plan.
Right, yeah.
It's just the next step of getting in with the county, and it's-
And, you know, I, I just wondered why it's taken us so long to have done and filed, you know?
Right, right.
Well, yeah, we'll check in with the surveyor.
Doesn't seem like it's been, you know, like it's, I mean, usually maps are filed with the county in reasonable amount of time, so.
Yeah, sometimes those items will linger on towards the end, once all the other stuff's addressed, so, uh, as long as that's provided, and you guys record it, and that's, that's what-
Well, we're gonna be throwing the, the load on you, Camille, to get back to, I mean, they're gonna have to show proof of all this before these, you know, there again, before we get the building permit, you know?
Before they start, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, the applicant shall provide revised survey map showing all utility, okay, this is part of it, max, okay.
Really, that one just covers all the easements, because we're, we have the, uh, sewer and water, uh, discharging off-site.
Correct.
Uh, we just wanna make sure that those easements are set in place, and that it's set in, you know, in a written document.
Yeah, that's going through, uh, the property behind you, correct? Yeah.
Right.
So how are they gonna, are they gonna show up, an amended?
We basically would have to show up a larger area, right? E, for the, that-
For the survey.
Yeah, the survey would just cover the extent of the easement going to the north, uh, and all the areas that you guys are using for your utilities, so you would just zoom out from the site, and you look at how, the, the broader extent of, of what's going on.
Is that gonna be reflected on the neighboring properties survey, to cover that, you know what I mean?
What's, what's the question?
The, the, those easements which are going through the property behind you, is, is, aren't their, their survey, isn't their survey gonna have to be amended to reflect that?
They, they're, um, that would be in the deed of their, of their lot, so their lot now have, uh, the easements, you know, recorded in-
Does it have them already?
Uh, I believe there's something there, we just need to show it accurately on plan. Uh, I did, we did a deep search, we did see that there was something, uh, an all-encompassing easement for the utilities, I think that was done several years ago, and there is easements for, um, stormwater discharge as well. Uh, we just need to see it on a full map.
Who owns that property that?
I believe, I believe it's William Brand?
Bill Stone, Bill Stone.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost that big lot still.
Yeah, but we're just wanna make sure that, you know, it isn't down the road a problem.
Yes.
So if you ever sell that lot or anything, that's gonna be part of it.
That's basically what we're getting at, yeah. So myself-
The new owner would know that there's an easement in this utility.
Surprise.
Yeah.
So.
So that means you gentlemen have been in contact with Mr. Brand's lawyer to ensure that that is actually a real deed, and I only say that because of Mr. Brand's previous historical activities. There is a deed that exists that has these easements in it.
We were, uh, we were able to locate it online, there was-
Okay, were you, okay.
Um, we just wanna see if from the applicant provided, we just did a quick search on our end, but, uh-
And I think that's smart to provide that.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Okay, uh, the applicant must provide approval from Green County DOH for proposed water system design, including specifics on lateral size, met, connection methods, backflow prevention, treatment, and storage. Uh, have you, have your, had any correspondence with the?
Yes, New York State, uh, DOH.
Oh, you're, it, this is New York State, that's our Green County DOH, covered that, I know, I know they do this septic.
So I looked up on the Green County website, and for the DOH, and there's a tab for environmental there, and it says that all of that stuff is deferred to the New York State Department of Health only on the office.
It might be deferred to the state, we need to interact here, so either the, the county or the state, maybe the water, uh, it just depends on the county, uh, some counties defer to the state.
Maybe, maybe I'm thinking of septic, but I know the septic, they bring, makes us through the county.
That goes to the E C, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, the well has been inspected, we got the yield test, we got the five-part test, that's, the applications have been applied for and sent in to the DOH, um, and the owner has a consultant that's going to be designing any treatment, or that type of stuff that, that may be required.
They haven't gotten any, uh, specifics back on it, um, as far as quality?
Um, that's the yield test form that you're looking at?
Yeah, you know, you know, yield test, but, uh, as far as-
The five-part test?
Yeah.
We have the-
Yeah, we have it.
We do have the information, we can provide that, um, I believe we just got it recently, though, so we don't know the extent yet of treatment that's gonna be required. But again, that's gonna be done by, the owner has a, a water treatment consultant that'll be handling that stuff, and obviously, any of that information will go to you guys, as well as, uh, Creighton Manning, as well as DOH. And we can review that, you know?
Yeah.
Some good submissions, and, you know, it shouldn't hold anything, though.
So internal plumbing in the building is going to be reviewed by the building department?
Yes, all of it.
Why isn't that in the drawings?
Because typically, it's later on, it's a, it's a building department level drawing, so the MEP would engineer, would, would design a-
Yeah, we don't need that.
That's, that's typically later on.
I used to do construction job, and-
Yeah.
It was, everything was all inclusive.
When, when we get into the building design and go for the building permit, all that stuff will be provided.
Okay, uh, onto the septic, cause this has been like an ongoing thing that's been foolishly- So, where, where are you? I mean, I see, I see you sent us a design, so you're basically, you went to square one, started off.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay. So we, we checked in with D E C, we went through all the proper procedures with them, we, we submitted all the proper applications, we got the existing septic system inspected, uh, based on that inspection, we adjusted a design, uh, so basically, wha- what we're doing is we're keeping, we're keeping part of the existing system, and providing a new piece, uh, as part of the, the design for the building, um, and we are keeping, well, I'll, I'll let you speak to the, to the, what we came up with for the final design for this.
Okay, so where we started on this, we had an existing system that was designed for a much higher water use than what our facility's gonna need.
Yeah.
It was originally designed for 4,880 gallons per day, our system only needs to use 1,000 gallons per day, um, but we did not know the condition of it, so we had it inspected, we had all the tanks inspected, we test-ran the pumps, um, the air raiders, and we ensured those were all working, and then the tanks actually, a bunch of them had cracks in them, and then they were not traffic rated, so we realized we were not going to be able to reuse the existing tanks, so that was why we designed our own tanks, specific to our site.
You know when that was installed, those tanks, pretty recently?
I believe it was in 2020 or 2021.
And they've never been used.
It has never been used.
Uh, do you, do you realize our building department requires a septic permit, separate, you know?
Yep.
Yes.
We are aware, yep.
Yeah. And, uh, it has to be reviewed by them, prior to backfilling, setting. Um, so the SWIP isn't finalized, then?
So it, it's, it's there, they just, I just wanted to make sure it's coordinated with, once all the revisions are made on the drawings throughout this process, this is just a general comment of, make sure it reflects the latest conditions of the plans, and the details, um, but it's, it's largely there, we have received everything, um, there's just some consistency things that we have to address, uh-
So it hasn't been, um-
The final-
Yeah, but it hasn't submitted to D E C or anything, right?
Yeah, no, it won't be submitted.
It won't be.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what's that? It won't be?
Typically doesn't get submitted to D E C, just the N L I will get submitted to D E C, D E C, and not approval.
Okay, so they don't review the SWIP, okay. Okay, um, that's, okay, so there is an existing well, that's right, is there, must be a septic system for that old house.
On the grant, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll all be decommissioned.
Big boys, that was, I'm saying.
Frisky.
Yeah.
Frisky.
Yes. Hey, where are you?
So the well is on whose property?
What, the existing one?
Yeah.
Is there now?
Yes, that's on Grant.
That little, that little brand, no, 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 that, no, that little house, those big boys, there, the little black house.
And that's the well you're using?
No.
No, no.
That's gonna be abandoned, that would be decommissioned.
Right, that's what I'm, I'm saying.
Right.
Okay, um, have you had any correspondence with, uh, DOT as far as your entrance?
Yep, we, uh, we got stage one approval, um, I've got a copy of Wendy, who was our traffic engineer, um- And they just provided that today, Wendy just gave me the, the correspondence from DOT that says they approved the driveway locations and the number of footways, so they did provide that today.
Okay.
Provide you guys with that.
Um, as long as they're happy, we're happy, I think.
So, yeah, they'll still have the permit and, and approve the, the drawing, um, works on traffic controls, and that will be done by, by DOT then, they'll then submit us, what, prior to construction, they'll provide us the final approval, uh, for DOT.
Um, okay, applicant shall comply with landscape deed agreement between them and adjacent property in their rear. For a landscape screen of the truck fueling operations, will provide written confirmation terminating this requirement.
So that was something that was, uh, within the deed of the site, that was an agreement made from Mr. Brand, um, such that I think when they were doing the old application for the, uh- Um, such that I think when they were doing the old application for the, uh, assisted living facility, they wanted to make sure that that was, that gas station and, and the fueling operations were screened
Yeah.
with, with vegetation. Um, so that was an agreement made between the applicant and the, uh, and the owner. Um, we're just asking if that condition still applies, um, if the, if the owner is seeking that. Um, if they still wanna have a screen, if they're planning on selling the lot or, or keeping the lot. We just wanna make sure that that's, if it's not in place, then, then provide something from the owner that says, you know.
Documentation.
We, you don't, we don't care about the screen anymore because we're not providing this, uh, assisted living facility, so. Just something to.
Have you had any discussion with Mr. Brandt?
No, uh, I wasn't aware of it, I'll ta, I'll check with the owner, he may be aware of it.
Yeah.
Um, and it may have gone away at some point, but, uh, yeah, and we'll confirm and provide whatever, you know.
It could be an easy one, it could be just, you know, he doesn't need it anymore, but it is, it is written and recorded.
Right.
Uh, it's part of the deed, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I think we skipped number five, the, it just talks about the future signage, so when they go in for, um, you know, the, the fuel sale sign with all the prices.
Going down to the bottom here.
Um. We just wrote that, that's gonna be another application that they have to submit.
I just didn't put it on the top because it didn't have to be finalized before.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all building department. And, uh, the applicant shall provide New York State Agriculture and Markets review and approval of food preparing during the building department review process. There again, I think that's something that building department.
Yeah.
And I, I've even had an initial conversation with the, uh, Agriculture and Markets Department on that too, so.
Are they gonna do some kind of a little, uh, quick mark in there or?
Yeah, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a small kitchen, it might be a commercial kitchen, but, yeah.
That's good.
So. Yeah, it's gonna be nice, some chicken fingers.
Another Dunkin', I don't know, I should get some Dunkin'. Oh, you have a Starbucks now.
Yeah. You're right, you gotta give them some competition, right?
They're lying at that one arena, it's like incredible, I can drive through this.
And why?
I know, it's expensive, I gotta, I gotta slum it at Stewart's.
Um, is everybody in agreeance that condition number three should be changed from Green County DOH to New York State DOH? Just making sure we're gonna make that amendment there before we read it.
I believe the septic is being reviewed by D E C for the speedies permit?
Yeah, I was actually talking about the water.
Oh, number three, I looked, I saw a septic.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
No, the Green County DOH hasn't weighed in, because I know, I know on residential anyway, they, they, uh, oversee the septic, so, um. Versus, they're, Green County DOH.
Well, who does you say the septic, the D E C?
The septic is D E C, well is D O H.
Okay, yeah. We're talking about the water, the proposed water you referenced, same.
I was, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so it's not getting approval from Green County DOH, you're getting approval for the water systems from New York State.
They defer to New York State.
Okay, that's, so that should, that probably be changed.
That, and then the next one for the septic wouldn't be Green County DOH, it would be New York State D E C.
I don't know, really? Cause I'm residential, that.
I'm not, I'm actually not sure for Green County, but I think either words, either county or state, um, you can make the language say either.
Yeah, you might, you might wanna do it that way, right?
Green County or N Y S.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, uh. Do we need to have a discussion about the building process? Do we need to put this in a condition?
I, I think that maybe because there's such, so many outstanding conditions, we don't usually have this many. And they're major water and sewer. Um. We might want to put something in there for maybe the engineers to ensure that everything isn't, has been received and compliant.
There is, there is a lot of conditions, but a lot of these are, you know, boilerplate conditions that we typically see as part of approvals, you know. I'd say three or four of these are just, maybe building departments can reuse certain aspects. We just like to include it because sometimes it gets lost in translation between planning board and building department, so we just like to have it on the record. Um, you know, I know, I know it looks like a lot, but they can, they can certainly iron all that.
I mean, and some of this will have the oversight of the building department.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Most of it, except for the water sewer.
Well, the sewer, I mean, that, that, that'll have a building permit, uh, specific for that.
I'm sorry, engineer plans will come through the building department for that.
I guess, what, my point is. Do we, do we wanna ask for a town designated engineer on oversight or, or, or are we pretty good with just?
The concern is that this won't be handled by the, the building department when it's.
Well, uh, do we need to have another, you know, representing the town or?
Does the town have an inspector for these, these tanks and the systems?
I, I would say that our building inspector would, uh, be in the septic anyway.
Yeah. Usually that's what, you know, E P W would look at it or the town.
So I guess then we're probably good.
Will we be able to ask for Alan to report back? Or a, a report from Alan back to us?
Well, that's where it's kind of out of our jurisdiction, I just wanna see that it's done, you know.
I think, I think that's typically would not happen.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's the maintenance of the sand filters?
In terms of what's been done previously or what will need to be done when this is due to service?
Well, it will need to be done once it's up and running, pretty good for ten years.
I don't believe the code specifies a specific timeline, but the system is planned to be serviced every six months, which will include, um, cleaning the filters in the air raiders and raking the sand filters and making sure there's no vegetation in them.
Who has responsibility for that?
Exposed, what do you mean, vegetation, they're not sealed?
The sand filters are right on the surface, um, it's.
Oh, oh, fine.
Yeah.
So what stops the, the flow is from backing up and spilling over?
Well, it's a filter bed, you know, I mean, they can fail, but that, you know, then they would have to be replaced.
Maintenance every six months.
Yeah, and that would be handled by the, uh, by the, whoever's managing that store once it's open. And we would provide that, when we do the as-built inspection on the septic system, once everything's done, we would provide that in our, um, certification letter that those things have to be done every six months.
So, it's on them.
Yeah.
Cause if they don't do it, I, I'd see both their sale.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was asking that question.
Okay, uh. If there's no more questions or concerns? Will new resolution?
There's, there's a couple of items that we had.
Oh, okay.
That weren't, um, in the res, or suggested resolution that were still kind of pending, um. I think one of the comments I, we had was the, um, we asked if, if the applicant would consider, you know, the, the gas canopies, you know, the pillars that come down, we asked if they could do like a, like a brick veneer on the bottom of those, just to mash the building. You see a lot of that in like rural farms or like the, and like, like the, the higher end gas stations, it's, it's a nice aesthetic. Um, it's not required by them, it's just an aesthetic thing, it, I think it looks better, um. When you look at the canopies and the, and the posts coming down, you'll have like a three foot high.
Also, right now it's just steel going into ground, is what you're saying?
I believe so, or, or going into concrete.
Into the concrete.
Yeah, so.
Pump.
Yeah, they're gonna have the concrete, uh, bases or you'd have a, like a nice brick, uh, base, so, you know. It's, it could be a veneer, it could be a, a more cost effective option, but generally it does look better, I know the newer, uh, fueling sale, like, like wall walls in New Jersey do that, I did a lot of wall walls in my, back in my day, they do a lot of that, which, which I think looks good, it, it complements the building. Something the board should consider, um, just for an aesthetic thing.
Would the property owner consider that, you think, or?
Probably, I mean, we can bring it up.
Well, we gotta.
Yeah, well.
Do we, wanna put this, yeah.
I didn't necessarily think it was.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, it's just an aesthetic.
Yeah. Yeah. What's everybody's thoughts on how to handle that? We, we, I don't see good for a place to insist on it, but, you know. What do you think, Wendy?
Well, you can also hide potential problems down the road, if the canopy starts to rust inside, um, conceal it since things, I mean, you, if it's not concealed, you're gonna see there's no problem, it needs to be painted, it needs to be maintained. Uh, we had a s- similar issue at work where pillars were concealed. And, uh, after we opened them up, we found out that the I D's were rotted right off and that was at work.
Ah.
So. Looks good, but.
Yeah.
It's not great for main, maintaining.
A lot of wall walls with the things falling down.
Well, they may actually protect them from salt, it's gonna be spread around too, I don't know.
Yeah.
So.
If some of them do a full, full column, other some of them do just the bases, but.
Think of it as steel beams, that's all.
That's just an aesthetic item, if you guys up to the board. Um, the, the other item I had was the, the water storage tank, were you guys gonna have that inside?
That, that's the plan right now, but we obviously still have to look at that and see if that's gonna be feasible.
Yeah.
If not, obviously.
What is the size of the tank?
Uh, what are we doing it?
I think thousand gallon? Two thousand gallons, um, which is two days worth of water use for that building.
So our comment was, if it's gonna be inside, it's gonna be pretty large, I mean, these things are generally.
Is it a plastic or is it a metal or, do you know how it's constructed?
Typically, square, round.
Right, either or.
Wait, so we don't know if it's gonna be concealed or inside?
They're, they're saying it's gonna be inside.
I can keep it freezing.
I mean, it's gotta be in something. Oh, yeah, that's my point, is it's not just gonna be a tank sitting outside.
No, it's a good sized tank.
Yeah.
Two thousand gallons.
Yeah.
We just wanna make sure there's enough room inside the building and if it's gonna be moved outside, we would screen it with a fence or something.
You'd be good to keep it from freezing in the winter.
Well, yeah, that's true. It would be a separate, almost like a wellhouse.
So freezing, they didn't want that.
Um, but yeah, that's.
So if it's outside, should it not be enclosed in some type of?
You're gonna have to be in building, or.
It's gotta be enclosed.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that's not indicated on any of the drawings or anything?
Well, it just seems that it's a fairly large addition to the building or lot, it's not anywhere, so where would that go?
And, and we don't, we don't know the extent of the filtration system that might be needed, so that, that stuff just hasn't been completed yet, so.
That might cut away.
When we get to that, if we, you know, if we get to the point where we need it, that'll all be submitted to the building department as part of the permit process and whatnot.
If you guys have to bring that outside, I think we should just know that, you know, somewhere on the site plan we can see it, that's, that's.
Coronation, if it's, can it, uh, be stored, water stored for any period of time?
Uh, that I don't know.
I would think so.
They would provide the treatment, uh, as part of their. Yeah, that would be, that would be part of the same area, wherever the storage stuff going, that's where the filtration is gonna go as well.
So there could actually be another, uh, building to be extended to accommodate.
Well, yeah, we, we hope not, but.
That's just a condition I would, I would suggest we, we add.
The, the plan right now is to provide that inside the, the current design building.
Hey, what, what's your suggestions, uh, verbiage on that?
Um, if the, if the, uh, water tank has to go outside, i- if it's moved exterior to the building, then, um, provide an updated site plan for review and screen the tank from, uh, from view from the customers.
Uh, or maybe we would just wanna shorten.
You, you can shorten that, do a little.
Okay, so.
Provide updated.
Is that any change in the site plan?
No, update site plan if.
To accommodate, to accommodate.
Outside water tank.
To accommodate water tank period, because they're not showing it whether it's inside or outside.
We're just doing the site plan here, we're, we're not doing a building, so why don't you just, when you designed a building, accommodate it?
Right.
I mean, it may be a little larger than what you're showing here.
Right.
I mean, if we have any limits on, you know, they.
Exactly, because of.
It's, you know, ten feet longer, is it gonna matter?
No, but it'd be nice to have it put down, you know.
Yeah, but we're not looking at the building, so they don't know why or anything of what they're doing. Until they know what they have to do, they probably don't have the building final design.
That's why we, we asked the question now, so if you, you have to push the building back ten, ten more feet, we would know that now versus during construction, when we find out. Oh, we've gotta extend the building out ten feet to fit the tank.
I mean, it looks like there's room on the end here to the north.
I can't think how big of a tank, two thousand gallons.
Pretty big.
Yeah, right, and you can't offset parking area, that's.
Well, I mean, let's see where you've accommodated for it now. I think the idea was that it would go somewhere here, if possible. However, if that needs to extend, the water are getting smaller, you know, there's adjustments that can be made.
Wait a second, less beer?
That walk-in cooler might get a little bit, might lose a couple doors, but we'll see.
Trying to think how to handle this. Write up all day the building plan to, so.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be in the back, it's gonna be tend to be tall, I would imagine. You could go higher, but even, even with the.
Yeah, I know, this is.
Right.
I mean, it was always proposed to building.
You may have other equipment there to it.
But.
We'll find a way to accommodate it.
Okay, you wanna just leave it alone and let it? I mean, they're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be accommodated regardless.
And inside.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be enclosed, yes.
And is that, it's enclosed supposedly now?
It's, either way, it goes on the edge.
That's the plan, that it's gonna be in the building, yes.
Yeah.
And if there's a modification, I'll take it to the building department.
Yeah.
All right.
So maybe we'll let that one go, work its way out.
Sure.
Great, um, no, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, yeah, just something to think.
Yeah, a, a two thousand gallon tank is the size of the tank, yeah. I know in that existing structure of Brandt's there, there's three or four.
In the wellhouse?
In the well, we put, we put them in there, you know, quite a while ago, they're all plastic. I'm not sure what the gallons is in them, but they were really size.
They're four, five thousand gallon tanks.
Is that what they were?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, for assisted living, it's.
Yeah.
Was required.
Fire, yeah, yeah.
That's for fire, for the sprinkler system?
Yeah.
For the assisted living.
Yeah. I know they were big. Okay, um, any other comments, corrections, concerns? I'm sorry about that? Okay, yeah, it's gonna be a long read.
What is your timeline?
As far.
Do you have a timeline for starting construction?
That I don't know, I'd, I'd have to check with the owner.
Okay.
Okay, cause we're also saying this has to be done before you get a building contract.
Oh, yeah.
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 Everybody ready? Whereas, surrender Kima wishing to construct a gas station convenience store on parcel bearing tax, tax map number four zero dot zero zero dash four dash two point two two and four zero point zero zero dash four dash two point one one two, located at one two five five two. Yes, routine idea, we submitted a site plan application to May nine, twenty twenty four planning board meeting. And whereas a G M L two three nine, um, referral was completed and submitted to Green County Planning Board with the responsive local decision with no comment.
No, that's what.
With response. With comment, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, whereas letters were directed to the Green County Planning Board, New York State Department of Land, Land Conservation, N Y S D O T, N Y S Office of Parks Recreation, Historical Preservation, and the N Y S Department of Health advising of the planning board's intent to take lead agency. And whereas after further discussion and consideration by the members of the town and both our planning board during the March thirteenth regular monthly meeting, resolved that this actually be granted a negative declaration for the purpose of sacred, and whereas a public hearing having been duly noticed, duly published in the Times Union is held on said application at the New Baltimore Town Hall. April tenth, twenty twenty five, the members of public offering comment. And whereas following further review of engineer comments, it's a June twelfth, twenty twenty five regular meeting, it was resolved, planning board approved the Kima gas station convenience store site plan application under the following conditions. approved the Kima gas station convenience store site plan application under the following conditions. The applicant must provide a PDF of the lot consolidation map as reported with the Green County Clerk's office to the town and the town designated engineer. The applicant should provide revised survey map showing all utility and access easements on a property, including written easement agreements that demonstrate the perpetual use of the adjacent property for vehicles, utility, and stormwater access. The applicant must provide approval from N Y S D O H for proposed water system design, including specifics on lateral size, connection methods, backflow prevention treatment, and storage. Internal plumbing will be reviewed by the building department. The applicant must provide approval from the Green County or N Y S D O H on the proposed septic design and final design of the proposed pipe sizes, invert slopes, and materials. Internal plumbing will be reviewed by the building department. The applicant must submit a finalized SWIP with the completed and assembled appendices. Final SWIP shall include a draft version of the N O I for the construction of, the construction general permit. Until such time, the N O I is submitted to the N Y S, uh, D E C prior to any disturbance. The SWIP shall be coordinated with the final construction drawings once all agency comments are addressed. All existing wells and septic systems shall be decommissioned in accordance with county and state health department requirements. A water well abandonment and decommissioning report shall be submitted to N Y S D E C, and proof of that filing shall be submitted to the town. The applicant shall provide N Y S D O T perm thirty three dot com dash com, uh, approval correspondence for the driveway access and layout to the town and town's designated engineer. The applicant shall apply, comply with the landscape deed agreement between them and the adjacent property in the rear parcel four zero dot zero zero dash four dash two point one 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 for a landscape screen of the truck fueling operations or provide written confirmation terminating this requirement. The conditions mentioned above must be met before a building permit can be secured. Any future proposed signage, including vehicle, fuel sale signage, ground mounted signage, and driven signage, shall comply with the town and the Baltimore requirement, shall be submitted under a separate signage application to the building department. The applicant shall provide the N Y S, uh, and markets review and approval of food preparation during the building department review process.
I'm also curious, approve the resolution for the site plan application for the Kima gas station convenience store.
Bill's seconding, no favor?
All right.
Right, motion carries. Okay, you got quite a laundry list there, you know.
We'll get to it.
Okay, well, like I say, it's.
Are you representing, who are you?
Um, I'm, uh, Sergeant Chima Sa.
Okay, do you have any idea when you're going to s- wanna start this?
Timeline of it?
Yes.
Uh, I haven't, I'll check out about it, yeah.
So the escrow should continue, we stand in line.
Okay.
Build permits.
We're getting ASAP, they're getting close.
I'm just curious because.
Let's clarify that. Um, the escrow, uh, we're, oh, it's right, we had, where, what's the saddest of the escrow, I forgot all about that, we had that.
I sent it over to Kevin, he got, he got the request.
Yep.
Mister Chima's not in the country, right, or not in the city?
Oh, he's not in this, he's traveling right now.
So.
Okay, well, uh, as I, you know, we're gonna need further escrow, because, uh, all that stuff's gonna be reviewed by Camille. And, uh, so, uh. Building, building departments up here.
We're getting close, it's, it's, you know, just the details and the fine, fine fitting and everything, but the, the big picture's there, you know, we're, we're.
At some point, I'm sure our building inspector will be in touch with you.
Yes.
When he, when they do the application, to get your thoughts on it, you know, so.
I'm sure he'll be in touch with us when he sees this list.
Well, I mean, it, it, well, I'm afraid Manning could, I'm sorry to, you know, sign off on it, you know.
I'd just like to be thorough, that's it, that's it.
No, 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 I.
Sorry for the long list.
You'd be, you'd be great.
No, I think that's good, because otherwise, we don't want you starting a project and having problems later on.
Especially the tanks that were installed in twenty twenty, there's no records of it, and so that's, we're trying to prevent, you know, the lapse of, you know.
No, we appreciate you, you know, putting up with this, and, uh, and April's, uh, put a lot into this too.
That's right.
Yeah, she has a lot of time.
I'm just here for that.
So, okay, well, thank you, good luck, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right.
Hope you don't run into anything else.
Are you all set for this?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is your coffee or something?
That's not gonna help.
No, you, uh, you know, I really, uh, this is the first time we've worked with you guys.
Yeah.
I, I don't know about you guys, but I'm very happy with what you guys.
I appreciate it, yeah, I just, I like to be thorough, I don't like to withhold anything, you know.
So long, doggone process.
Yeah.
We had a little bump in the road in the beginning, because the SNX came in very low from the initial escrow. You know, which threw us, because even reviewing it, we thought a lot of, you know, the escrow too, I mean, I mean, it should have been more realistic, I kinda say.
Sometimes, sometimes they trust it quicker, sometimes it's drag on, I guess.
Well, this is a good job.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure it's, it's reviewed completely.
I think maybe this property has issues with development.
Well, okay, if you saw what that assisted living facility went through for years.
Yeah, what year was that?
Jeez, that's, I was new on the board, that was over ten years, that's ten years.
Yeah, it's a dead project now, though.
Yeah, it's a change.
It doesn't exist.
Yeah, but.
Really.
When was the, uh, the dentist office built, that's, that's fairly now, crazy. It's like it was ten years old. That really looks.
That was after, um, Brandon started the whole thing, and then it went to the dentist.
Yeah, he would disappear, you know, in a couple of years.
Puerto Rico.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
And you guys, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike Biskon was his lawyer, though, that's why.
Yeah, right.
These are sick.
Yeah, assisted living facilities are definitely, uh, much more challenging use, you know.
And he had the major issues.
Are they there?
He was, he was making out like a bandit, getting.
He just said, here's the communications, yeah, he handed you the.
Okay.
Or us.
I guess that's one for everyone, then.
Is that, was it communication from the D O T?
No, yeah, I think, yeah, sure.
Late, well. Stage one, permanent.
All right, good one.
Yeah.
History. Yeah, more, more, more fires started.
Oh, we were, yeah, look, we were really hopeful that, that assisted living, because the area really needs it.
Yeah.
It really, really was something that, I mean, I, I certainly wanted to see it done.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah, we gotta have a place for Rob to go.
Maybe soon, maybe, maybe sooner than later, I think my, my brain is fried.
That's when I used to work in a assisted living facility, I was a, I was a waiter for, for the restaurants in there.
Oh, wow.
Oh, boy.
It's just a community, I mean, it's like college for old people.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they, they get into their own trouble.
Oh, they have fun, they would, they would play, like, they would bring little vodka shooters, and put it in their, all their foamers.
Half the hour probably starts at one o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're so expensive now, in this area, that I don't know if a person can build a thing to get the money back that he sunk into it.
And the headaches of running it.
Oh, God.
It's expensive to live there, too, you know.
Oh, I think if it, um, my first job, I mean, the bottom ice is three thousand dollars.
I'd be here for this, for this resolution.
For the assisted living.
What's the big resolution thing here somewhere?
It is, I can give you mine if you want it.
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
It's right before the.
No, I'm not paying anybody, but I worked so hard for it. No way, my house will be my debt, uh, that's it.
Just copies of it.
They instees.
Yeah.
You guys need anything else from me?
Oh, thank you very much.
No, no.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Well.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at this, anybody wanna look at this final map before we, uh, um, do this, uh, on the.
Oh, is that moving that little piece of property so that I have a driveway?
Lot, lot line, no, no.
Now, is that not that one?
That one, that one.
Well, see, you're, you're missing, you're missing meeting, and that's what happened.
It'll be a public hearing next month for that, obviously, V I.
This, this is, this is, uh, down under sixty one. Anything else wants to look at?
I see, I looked at it on my mind.
I remember this, okay, yeah. Yeah.
It's just that small piece of land, they're basically swapping it from one side to the other, because they're eventually going to subdivide the larger piece, and wanna make sure it's conforming when they do that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt anybody, that's for sure.
No.
Well, there was no change in the size.
And it's all family.
I think they just wanna get rid of that cedar tree, they wanted to get that cedar.
Now he's down the road, he's got to subdivide.
He's gonna subdivide, divide the Colburn property?
Right.
Right, so then they'll all be on the same property, they're family. And, uh, the son will be able to build a house on that subdivision.
I think parents and children need to live.
That's right, Rob, you tell.
Are you speaking for?
One hour, two hours, too far away, they're gonna stay.
I see you guys, good night, I hope you have a good night, go back to bed. Enjoy the day, come on, come on, nice one.
I've gotta jump already, uh, tomorrow, so.
Who moves you on?
I do, who the hell do you think will do it?
Jeez, I don't know, yeah.
Uh, I think John is the one being.
Here, here's some maps, quarter inch.
In fact, they did, uh, quantity this morning, along with, uh, a dozen.
Okay, let me find a resolution, I started doing that.
Oh, doing more.
Okay, all right, okay, so.
Make sure I don't walk away without stuff tonight.
That's why I said, I took a shower.
It's all on me.
Yeah, well, we got it.
We're, we're not done, we're not done, we're not done with the meeting, you're, you're the only audience left, you gotta sit back down.
You're still younger than I am, kid.
Okay, well.
Those backos, though.
As you're walking out the door, asking my resolution.
I've ridden in a few, on a few of those, so, you know, with my nephews and stuff.
Okay, this is in the Colburn Meredith Lot Line Adjustment Resolution. Okay, whereas Jeffrey Colburn is wishing to move point one seven seven acres from parcel number one seven point zero zero dash five dash one point two one, located on Kings Road, to parcel number one seven point zero zero dash five dash one point two two, located on Kings Road in town in Baltimore. Mike and Holly Meredith wishing to move approximately one point seven seven acres from parcel number one seven point zero zero dash five dash one point two two, located on County Route sixty one, to parcel number one seven point zero zero dash five dash one point two one, located on County Route sixty one, in a town in Baltimore, resulting in no change in acreage for either parcel.
Yeah, say that again.
They're adding exactly the same amount, they're taking it up.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, all right, okay. I wonder why nobody's surveying that.
Yeah.
Okay. Submitted an altered lot line application at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty five planning board meeting, whereas draft deeds were submitted and approved by the town's attorney. And whereas required maps and deed descriptions reflecting the change were submitted at the June twelfth, twenty twenty five planning board meeting. Therefore, be resolved, the planning board does hereby approve that maps and deeds filed into Green County Clerk's office. Parties are required to execute the boundary line agreement and deeds, and recorded deeds and maps for the Green County Clerk within sixty days of approval at no expense to the town. You hear, motion?
A motion to approve the Meredith, Meredith lot line adjustment.
I'll second that, I'll second my vote, okay, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, here, let me, uh.
That's a good meeting, how long's that?
Kenny then didn't give us a box.
There is no box.
Okay.
Um.
He's doing the middle.
I just, yeah, just figured.
Let's say that, that'd help.
These are different shape, too.
Who's the surveyor?
That's what I was trying to see.
Philip? Sorry, I'm sorry. Turn it down.
He's guitar. Plays guitar, too.
I'll do just hook the wire.
Danny's an or. Oh, well, Junior, the son.
Four mile point.
How many miles into it are you?
Not a mile. That sort of, early family started out.
And I'm sure once these are filed with the county, they'll be back with a subdivision application.
They couldn't have done that all at once, huh? No.
I don't think so, because you need separate maps and separate.
Well, I mean, they could have gone through the approval process, and then they just file one, then file the other?
I, it's because there's time limits on that stuff, too, like you have to.
I wonder if they just, if they didn't do the lot line adjustment.
I'm not sure.
Couldn't they have just done a?
Exactly why.
Go right into the subdivision, yeah, I don't know. Couldn't we talk about first?
It was kind of a weird, weird situation, why do you keep adding all those weird situations?
Well.
I know it.
One thing they weren't allowed to do on all the lot lines was to make the lot big enough to be subdivided.
Right.
This was the swap, so that's changed.
Because they talked about that, that they couldn't do it both at the same time.
But it could be one, it's beautiful.
Okay, yes, yes.
Oh, it's gonna be cool anyways. I even went in the ocean miles down there.
We want to make a motion to, uh.
I will make it, a motion to approve the May eighth, twenty twenty five, planning board meeting minutes. Did everyone have a prom, any prompts?
No. Second my bill, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I think that was it.
Yes.
Someone has to make a motion to the meeting.
A motion, you want a motion to close?
There's my minutes finally, at the bottom of my, my agenda, I mean, but, yeah, okay, it's not on there, oh.
It was on top.
Yeah.
When I handed that out.
Motion to.
I'm motion to close the, uh.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, planning board meeting for the town in Baltimore. Second is something.
They go on forever, begin.
Okay, Bill's seconding, he's, he's the second man tonight, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You know, you can kill the owl.
Wake these guys up here.